I'd like to open this meeting this evening in the planning and zoning. Welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. The meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, the Secretary of the Commission. And in the addition to the other members of the Planning Commission from right to left, I would also like to introduce Jacob Trimble to my right, who's the Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you've picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda lists the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to Planning Commission agendas. By doing this, you will be able to access the copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission will not make a decision on the petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on May 6, 2024. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning with end one week of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners and their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has a responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Person speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by the other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask a show of hands for persons in favor and in opposition and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. Their purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. The first petition heard tonight will be PC 12-24, Michael and Stacy Klinger.
Jacob, do we need roll call?
Yeah.
Good evening. PC 12-24, Michael and Stacy Klinger is a request for an amended C8 plan commercial district for a veterinary clinic, pet daycare facility, and all C2 shopping district permitted uses on a tract of 0.41 acres located on the east side of Telegraph Road, approximately 120 feet north of England Town Road. As the Commission can see, the site is located in South County, and on your right of your screen is the site outlined in red. Here is a larger aerial of the site. Again, the site is outlined in red. You can see it's surrounded by commercial frontage along Telegraph Road and residential behind. Here's the land use map again, just reiterating that single-family home behind, but commercial frontage along Telegraph. This is looking east onto the site in the public hearing notice. This is looking north up Telegraph Road. This is looking west across Telegraph Road. This is looking south along Telegraph Road. This is looking east onto the building along that northern side of the building. This is looking south along the back of the property. This is looking east from the back of the property. This is looking south onto properties on the southern side. This is looking north at the car wash adjacent to the property. This is looking south in the front of the property, looking at the residential neighbors. And next we'll have the petitioner.
Good evening. I'm Mark Doring, President of Doring Engineering. Next to me is Dr. Michael Klinger and his wife Stacy sitting in the first row there. We appreciate your time this evening. Dr. Klinger purchased this property back in 1985 and had his veterinarian clinic run there until January of 2020. Okay, the original zoning written up for it years ago was specifically for a veterinarian, nothing else. Okay, so it kind of ties us here. So we're here this evening to request the C8 be redone and rewritten. So this is the aerial of the site. North is up. That is Telegraph Road right there. And over here is England Town Road. That's our subject tract. It's .41 acre. Across the street on the corner there, we have C8. To the north of that, we have C2 zoning. We have C2 zoning here at the car wash. We have C8 here in the Deerburg Plaza. Behind us and to the south of us, we have R3 residential zoning. Here's a picture from the streets, a brick building for the most part, been maintained well. We'd like to put a little effort into it and get a new tenant in here and clean it up even for him. We have recently had a chiropractor that was interested, but because of the zoning situation, we had to just say we couldn't get it done on his timeframe. So we're asking for C2 uses. But anyway, this is north on the site plan. And again, that's Telegraph Road there. And again, existing zoning to C8, but it was just for a veterinarian. I put medical there, but excuse me. And then we're asking for proposed zoning with C8 with C2 uses plus veterinarian clinic, doggy daycare, grooming, and boarding. We had someone who was interested in the doggy daycare, and that person is no longer interested in it. So we are okay with that being removed from our petition. Okay? We were suspect about that with the neighbors being so close, and it fell through. So it makes it real easy on all of us this evening. The existing building is 3,300 square foot, brick with a hip roof. And we have the existing entrance and the existing parking lots. We're going to restripe them a little bit, but it's going to give us a total of 14 parking spaces with one handicap. We're not proposing to do any grading, any parking lot, any entrance revisions whatsoever. We're just really here to ask to expand our uses from veterinarian to the C2 uses. Again, we had a proposed eight-foot fence on my plan, and the reason that was for it is if the doggy daycare got approved. There's a nice six-foot site-proof fence that Dr. Klinger put in some time ago with the neighbor's help. And so I would respectfully ask at the eight-foot fence, and people may not want the eight-foot fence anyway, but that part of the petition would be respectfully removed also. And then we're going to do with the existing landscaping is going to remain, but we'll freshen that up. And then also, I'm sure staff, when we get into the process of, they'll have some discussions with us about landscaping. So we'll comply with the county ordinances on that. Okay? Really, that's it for my presentation. If anybody has any questions, Dr. Klinger or myself would be happy to try and answer them.
Do you have any tenants now?
We lost our veterinarian that was in there about two and a half years ago. The council approved a veterinary clinic a half mile to the south, and he moved his business down there. And so because he's so close and there's another veterinarian in the area, it's been virtually impossible to get a veterinarian to lease that space. And that's really the reason we're here tonight, to try to expand the uses.
Trying to preemptively expand it so you can advertise to different types of clients?
Correct, yes. It just takes too long to get somebody and then go through the zoning process and help setting there, so. Anybody else?
The only question I have is, may I please have your speaker card?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anybody that's representing a group that would like to speak in favor? Okay, is there any individual that would like to speak in favor? I said in favor. Anybody that would like to speak for a group in opposition? Okay, any individual that would like to speak in opposition? Please come on up. Is your speaker card? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brian Clark. My wife and I own the property directly next to the proposed project. Like other here tonight, I'm opposed to the, not opposed to the entire project, but a portion includes a doggy daycare. Obviously, we heard that they're not expecting to do that, but I feel like if it's being rezoned, they could make that decision to change back to that. I don't believe that this would be an ideal location for a doggy daycare as it backs up to a residential subdivision. I think that, we all know the amount of noise that would come from the location, would interfere with the property owner's right to quiet enjoyment, and not only in our backyards, but through our whole home. Doggy daycare, a lot of barking, even if you're doing it downstairs in the kennels, you know, you've got to bring them outside. It's the same thing. It's going to be noisy for all of us neighbors that are right around the property.
Ask Jacob a question. Could that be excluded in?
So, yes. So the, so based on what I've heard from the petitioner this evening, he is asking, the petitioner's representative is asking that be removed from their application. So just so you know, that the C2 shopping district permitted uses do not permit by right a doggy daycare. So if after tonight, with the petitioner removing that from their request this evening, the only request in front of the Planning Commission will be for C2 permitted uses, which a doggy daycare will not be a permitted use. If a subsequent property owner ever wanted to do a doggy daycare, it would therefore have to come back to the Planning Commission again as a public hearing.
How about boarding?
That is included. Boarding is more intense. That is not a permitted use by right in the C2.
Okay. That's all I was speaking to tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Richard and Martha Watson, 2465 England Town Road. Our property is adjacent to the veterinarian's office. We were just made aware 15 minutes ago that they were going to take the doggy daycare and boarding out. My main concern is by going, why are they rezoning it then if the doggy daycare and silver is not going to be done? That building was designed and built as a vet's office? And what else? I really don't, not familiar with C2 zoning. What else could be put in there then?
Sure, so I can respond to that. So a C2 shopping district is a lower, is one of the county's lower-intensity shopping districts. So the permitted uses by right were typically going to, you would be possible to do things such as retail, general service. It's really intended and philosophically intended to create and facilitate businesses that cater to the general public for items that they would need in their households. So it would be general retail sort of types of uses.
My biggest concern with the property is the parking situation. The current proposal has, I believe, 11 spots with a single way to get in and out of the parking lot. And Telegraph Road, if you're familiar at all, is very busy in the morning, very busy during rush hour. My main concern, if by rezoning this to a C2, you allow a different type of business that's going to have a much higher volume of people coming and going throughout the day, of vet business, the way it's been run. And we don't oppose a veterinary office because that's what the building was designed and built for over 25 years ago. Our opposition is any other type of business. And I will say this, Dr. Klinger at one time started to operate a doggy training school in the basement of the property, although it was clearly indicated by St. Louis County zoning, the only thing that was supposed to be done down in the basement was storage of medical files and medical equipment. He opened a doggy daycare. We found out about it. We saw a lot of traffic over there. We brought it to his attention. It didn't change. We finally had to go to St. Louis County zoning and file our complaint. It was then taken off the board then. Like I said, my concern with Dr. Klinger is approving a zoning change and saying, oh, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do this. And the next thing we know, things are happening that weren't supposed to be happening with the property. It's already happened to us once. Our concern is it happens again. That's all I have.
Well, I would just comment on that. If this does get changed and what you're saying happens again, then you just have to go back through the process, let the county know, and then it gets shut down.
Right, well, that's not a problem. Just like I said, if it's happened before in the past, then it did happen. What's keeping him, if you change to a zoning change? With taking all that off the board, the doggy daycare and the grooming, why are we even making this change? That's my main question. Let's keep it a veterinary's office. That's what it's been for 25 years. I have no problem with that whatsoever. I'm not anti-dog. We have three dogs. Okay? I'm not anti-Dr. Klinger, as long as he follows the rules that are set by St. Louis County. In the past, he has not.
Sir, did you hear the comment about there being numerous dog veterinary facilities in the area now, and it might be difficult to find a tenant for the building?
There's a doggy daycare approximately a half a mile down the street, but it doesn't adjoin to residential properties. I think there's a need for doggy daycare in those facilities in St. Louis County, but they don't belong next door to houses. I mean, the noise is incredible, guys. If you've ever been to one picking up or dropping-
That's not what he said. He didn't say put it in-
Oh, I'm having trouble hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Veterinary facilities, another vet. It's difficult to find one because there are numerous providers in that area. So I think-
Well, I agree with you totally, but there's also numerous dogs in that area. I don't think there's, when we get our vet done, sometimes we have to wait two or three weeks to get an appointment. So I think there is a need for more vets in that area. I have to disagree with the statement that it's hard finding someone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Would the presenter like to come up for rebuttal, please?
Oh, one more. I'm sorry. I was just informed some, one of the vets down the street about a half a mile just closed his location. So there is room for more vets in South County.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Klinger informed me that you've been looking for somebody, a vet to go in there, and we just have not been successful. And it's understandable that it's difficult to be pigeonied in to hold into one situation there. As for the traffic on Telegraph Road, I drive Telegraph Road every week. There's a lot of entrances that have 10 spaces on it. There's a lot of entrances that may have 100 spaces on there. So I don't see the traffic congestion being anything different than what you would normally expect to see on Telegraph Road.
Is it 11 or 14 parking spaces?
Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14.
14.
Okay.
That was going to be my same question too, because you said 14. I'm counting 11. Or you said 14 plus one handicap.
I meant to say including. I might have said that wrong. Usually it's including. I should have said including one handicap. So two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14. I'm getting old and my sight's going though, but I think I count 14 there. Including one handicap, and I apologize if I said it that way.
And what were some of the interested people in renting from?
We had a chiropractor that was interested.
Okay.
So that's why we asked for the medical and the C2 use.
Yes, sir.
And I can't say who's going to end up there, but I would think it'd be some type of use like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, can I have a? Can I see the hands for the people that are in favor of this? Okay. And for those that are opposed? One, two, three, one, two, three?
Six to three.
Six to three.
Yeah.
Okay, six to three. Very good. At this time, this public hearing for PC 12-24 is closed. Thanks for coming.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 13-24, Ameren, a request for a conditional use permit in the NU non-urban district to permit a telecommunications tower greater than 40 feet in height and an electrical substation. This is on 20.47 acres on the northwest side of US Highway 66, approximately 570 feet west of Kennedy Manor Court. So as you can see, this site is in southwest county and is bounded in red. On the larger aerial, you can see the quarry to the west, some large lots, single-family in the east, interspersed woods and vacant lots. On the land use map, you can see the different jurisdictions. So this is an image looking into the site. You can see the gravel road that leads to the substation, some of the existing accessory structures. This is an image looking southwest down Highway 66. This is looking across. You can see the railroad tracks. This is looking up Highway 66. This is an image of the existing electrical substation. This powers Pacific, Eureka, and Allentown. And finally, this is a view of the conditions where the proposed tower would be, so that woods area. And now we'll hear from the petitioner.
Good evening. My name is Russell Bean. I'm with Selective Solutions. We are a site acquisition, telecommunications site acquisition consulting company. We have been hired by Ameren to help zone and permit their private LTE network that they are constructing. Oh, okay. I see a couple of new faces since the last time I was here, so if you don't mind, I'll give a brief overview of the private LTE network that Ameren is constructing. Ameren has thousands of devices that they currently operate that help monitor their network. It also helps with wireless meter reading, and then it helps monitor their substations, their transformers, their power lines. And currently, they are on public networks. The majority of their system is on public networks where they Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, where they're having to pay to utilize those networks. And they're also, as this, as the private networks grow and expand and become 5G, soon to become 6G, before you know it, they're already talking about 6G, their equipment is being outdated. Where this was when LTE moved on to 4G and 5G, you saw a lot of hardware that was instantly unusable. A good example of this is your home security systems. They were all operating on LTE. And when the systems were upgraded, they immediately had to go through and upgrade all their hardware, which is, you can imagine, millions of dollars. Educational hardware unfortunately was in a situation where a lot of schools, their educational hardware was rendered obsolete when LTE was turned off and 5G and 4G and 5G were turned on. There was, I know T-Mobile and AT&amp;T kept their LTE systems operational while the schools were able to upgrade their networks. The idea behind this private LTE network is for one, is for cost. Millions of dollars a month are spent operating on these private networks. Building this private LTE network will save that money. And then two, the expected life of Ameren's communication equipment is going to triple. With the impending change from 5G to 6G, you're looking at a five-year probably life cycle of this equipment. By being on this private LTE network, they can keep that equipment in operation for 10 to 15 to even 20 years. And that's one of the main goals of this system is to extend the life cycle of their equipment. Probably the most important though, is security. By operating on their own private network, they're not subject to, as you hear all these breaches and all these private networks, you know, they are under the guidance of Homeland Security. And Homeland Security has unbelievable security restrictions on our power grid. And by operating on a completely private network that gives them the security that's required. One of the goals of this network, the funding of this network, required Ameren to first look at property that they owned. And that's why we are here today, actually with all the towers that we presented before this commission, have been located on Ameren-owned property. As the planner said, that this is a property that has a substation that serves the southwest part of St. Louis County. This tower will also, will also service the southwest portion of the county. What we're here requesting tonight, the original application we sent in was for a 300-foot self-support tower. My associate, Susan, who's here with me as always, went back to Ameren and had them take another look and say, hey, do you absolutely positively need that tall of a tower? They were actually able to go back and reconfigure their equipment, and we were able to lower the height of the tower to 200, it's 259 feet, we're calling it 260 feet. This will require us to gain a variance. If I could, I'd like to, we don't have our little cool camera thing anymore, if I could pass this around. What this photo I'm sharing shows is that the, that circle is a 260-foot circle around our proposed tower. And wanted to show that that just barely nudges into our neighboring property. The towers like this aren't designed to fall like trees. They're designed to collapse upon themselves. So even if it would have a failure event, the tower itself would never make it onto the adjoining property. The site itself is in a fairly rural, as much as you can call an area of St. Louis County rural, fairly more rural area. It's, would be on three sides, hidden by the trees. It's, would be on three sides, hidden by the trees, and we would fence and landscape per St. Louis County regulations. The, this tower would be available to co-locators. If one of the private networks would like to come and lease space, Ameren would be willing to lease space in order to help keep another tower from having to go up. They would be in their own fenced-off compound, separate from Ameren's, again, for security purposes, but they would have an area on the tower where they can co-locate their antennas. Just another aerial. The, it's the, actually, the company that's building these towers are ADB, and that's located four lots down. So, they wouldn't have far to go with their trucks if this tower's approved to build. And that's St. Louis County, and that's, this did pass FAA. It would require FAA lighting. It would be medium, medium intensity red lighting during the evening, high intensity white during the day. The way these lights are now designed is that they don't shine down, they shine up to keep the light from polluting below the tower. And with that, I would be open to any questions you might have.
Where are you in proximity to the prison?
I honestly am not sure, to be honest with you. Oh, we, I actually, if I can go back. The, the building that looks like there's some X's, the Bill, X building, that is the correctional facility. I just, we don't have a laser pointer, do we?
No.
And the tower, correct me if I'm wrong, I know in the past Ameren got a tower put in, and it wasn't exactly for their own use. They leased part of it out for other phone carriers. Is that the same deal with this?
We are, this will be available for other carriers to co-locate on. But the primary use is for Ameren's LTE network.
So, it wouldn't be a separate tower for other people? It would be on this tower?
If, if they want to lease from us, Ameren would lease it to them.
On this tower?
Correct.
I have to say this. What is the point in bringing this to us when the law is already in your favor on telecommunications towers? We're just going through the motions, and you're gonna get it anyway?
You know, it, may I expound? I don't, I, you know, when they passed this law, it was in 2016 when this law was coming up. And I really thought I was gonna be rendered obsolete, like, like the educational equipment was gonna be. And there is, actually, we've, we've, we've been denied in Missouri and have appealed and have not gotten our tower. I think, think there's more, there's more ability than, than led to believe, because I bet you there's somebody who's been up here in my position saying, you're right, can't do it. We're gonna get it anyway, but that's, that's not necessarily true. And the, the former chairman, he's seen me, I've been, I got my first tower was actually done in St. Louis County twenty-five years ago. And there's one thing I've always say, there's no point in me telling you lies. I've been, always been honest with this, with this commission.
I get that, and I'm not, I've been on the commission for going on ten years.
So, you, you've seen.
And I've not heard of one cell tower get turned down.
No.
In the ten years I've been.
And it is, and it is tough, and, and one of the reasons why Ameren brought us on is because we have been doing it so long. And we did look at these, and we've, we've looked at Ameren properties all over this corner of the county. And we've come to them and said, hey, listen, if you had to go on one of your properties, this is gonna be the one to go on, because it is further away from the small lot residential. It is in a more wooded, tree-lined area, and we did bring them to this location rather than, you know, a, a, there, there are substations that are in the middle of subdivisions that had plenty of room that this would have fit on. We said, hey, let's, let's, you know, one of the things they said when we started this project is we wanna be good neighbors to the county, because they've been good neighbors to us, and that's why we've, you know, we've brought the, the different properties that we've brought. The one on Tesson that sits back in that set of woods, there was, there's a, there's a, another substation directly on Telegraph Road across the street, or Tesson Ferry that we could have gone to, but we've, we've always encouraged them to work with you guys rather than against you guys. So, and I understand, and, and, you know, I've been all over the state of Missouri, and that same question's been asked to me. And, you know, what's the point? But I always respond with the same answers. There, there are items that you guys can consider that are in the county's best interest. I just think with this one especially, we did bring you the best property, I think, that i- if there had to be a tower somewhere in this corner of the county, this is probably where it should be.
Oh, in my mind, this is a no-brainer, due to the location and that, and I'm from that area. So, I'm very familiar with that area.
Any more questions?
Is this gonna be a galvanized steel color?
Yes, sir. It'll, it's the kind that I always say, it kinda looks like an oil derrick. But that is the, probably the least obtrusive type if you have to go that tall. The other option, and it would, it would fit on this property, but we don't like to put on, it was the ones with the guy wires. And that is actually, I think, more of a visual eyesore than the, than the self-standing towers.
How does this tie into the substation portion of it?
The, this is going to be offset and actually a separate, separate, or it's, it's own separate operation from the, from the substation.
Was the substation being expanded, or?
I don't believe so at this time.
Okay, because I'm reading here, it says use for telecommunications tower and electrical substation.
Um, I can address that. There currently is a conditional use permit to permit the substation, because it itself is a conditional use in the NU. So, in order to make sure that this conditional use permit that they're requesting now would account for that, we advertised it to include the existing substation.
Well, it's too good to be true. I figured Eureka was gonna get a boost in electric.
Well, it's.
God, it's a bit heaven.
We actually have met several times with Eureka. And that was their, their question was how do we get more power to that area? And there's, there's a substation, I guess it would be south of City Hall, right in front of the golf course, that I know there's some planned work on to hopefully improve the, the power situation there.
That's a very small one.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I mean, that was actually one that we were, they were considering that we move them away from, just do the, the proximity of, of, you know, everything that is Eureka around there. Yeah. Although we, we were, we have a Mexican restaurant that we love there a lot, and we weren't gonna be upset if we had to go to a zoning hearing.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have anyone that would like to speak for a group? In favor? Any individual that would like to speak in favor? Any individual speaking for a group in opposition? Or any individual that would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Well, then at this time, could we have a hand count of people in favor of this petition? How many have two, and those against? Zero. So, we will close this public hearing for, where'd it go? PC 13-24. Thank you. And now, we could start with PC 14-24.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. PC 14-24 Pickup Outfitters is a request for an amended development in the C8 and a change in zoning from C8 to R2 residential district for the purpose of parking outdoor storage and advertising signs on a three point zero three acre tract located on the east of Lindbergh Boulevard, approximately five hundred feet north of Audi Road. As you can see from this slide, the subject site is located in the northwest, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is a larger area map that shows the shape of the site and the surrounding land uses. The petitioners intend to return the portion in the broken line back to its initial zoning. This is the land use map. The site is currently occupied with two advertising signs. To the north and northeast of the site are a combination of commercial and residential uses, including a park. To the south and southeast, there are institutional, commercial, and residential uses. Further east is the city of San Ant. To the west are residential developments in the city of Maryland Heights. This is to the east, showing the public hearing notice. Lindbergh Boulevard is behind me. Northeast showing the subject site and the existing signs on the side. This is to the east, showing the rock, rock walkway, as you can see in the area map at the bottom left of the screen. This is looking south along Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking north along Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking southeast to the adjacent property. And this is to the west across Lindbergh Boulevard, showing the residential developments in Maryland Heights. And next.
We have the petitioner's presentation, please.
Good evening. My name is James Ramirez, and I am owner of Pickup Outfitters. It's just a small business owned by me, a, a family, just, I've owned for about thirty-two years, and we're looking to expand a little bit further north. This property's been vacant since I've been there. And what we've come, uh, found is that we, what we are gonna purchase it, but we need to redo the boundary lines on it. We wanna make them, just run parallel with what we presently have on the east side and square it off. And the gentleman we're buying it from, it wants to, he bought the property because he has two rental houses on it. And when we square it off, we're gonna keep, we wanna have a C8 on the commercial side, and he wants R2 on his side. So, I think we're going from five zones to two zones, which, I guess. So, this here kinda represents what we're trying to do as far as the zoning goes. We're the greens part there, so we're, we're just gonna take that red line, and we're gonna go straight up with it. I guess, let me go back a little bit further here.
So, you could see there.
Right there is what we want to see.
So, we're gonna be fixing, there's about five different parcels right there for, up where the two properties outlined in blue are. So, we're gonna be fixing those parcels there, taking essentially five and making them down to three. So, the two blue will be, go to R2, and then we would just extend our property line up essentially, and where the C8 zoned is.
Sir, would you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm Billy Glass.
Thank you.
So, that's essentially what we're trying to do there. Fix some parcels. It's where we're going from five, small, smaller parcels down to three, and having that boundary line adjustment. I guess you wanna go to the next one, the other way. So, you can kinda see there.
And also, as far as going from what we requesting C8, we wanna request overnight storage or parking on it. Just to park vehicles at night, which we currently have on the two properties below.
The residential properties, are those accessible from 80 Road? Is that how you get to those properties? You don't cut, you don't cut through the?
No. So, the, the C8 property will only be accessed through Pickup Outfitters' current property. We're not adding any additional entrances off of Lindbergh or anything like that. So, they currently, for the billboards, they currently have to come through our property to gain access to them. That's what that gravel lot you saw is a driveway to those billboards right there.
So, the, the point of the residential is really just to sell that parcel to the owners behind? Because you're not using it?
Well, he owns those, those two houses there.
Right.
There, this really has nothing to do with the apartments. It's, there's, there's two houses on that other lot.
Right.
And he bought this property so that he could, their driveway actually went in, onto this property. But once we straighten it out, that boundary line there, he'll maintain that property, and then his, his rental homes will have all the property they need to keep their driveways.
I'm not really following you at all.
So, when the original owner.
So, is the driveway gonna be on the flag part of the lot?
No, on the.
Well, up there, like, there it is, yeah.
The, so, yeah, so we're the, the rezone to R2.
Right.
So, the original owner, the current owner, that's why he bought all of that property, was because that one rental home, he found out that his driveway was going through there, so he was like, oh, I'll just purchase all of that property.
So, he purchased it so his driveway would be on his lot instead of encroaching on yours?
Exactly, so.
Or whoever bought it at the time.
Yeah, so he owns all that property currently. So, but he has no use for the commercial side. It is just sitting there vacant. So, that's why, since it busts up against us, that was the whole point of that.
So, you're, you own a parcel next to this?
Yes.
That we're looking at?
We own a parcel next to it.
South of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Go back one, I think I might show it. So, the Pickup Outfitters logo is.
Twenty-eight fifty North Lindbergh, you see that, that block there is.
And what are you gonna use the zone C8 for?
It proposed parking for, you can kinda see it there, where our current business is. We are just growing, and we need to expand.
More or less extending a parking lot.
Let me, I'm just asking a question. Could you explain to what exactly your business does here?
Yeah, so we install and sell aftermarket vehicle accessories. You know, like camper shells, things like that, steps, running boards, all that stuff. We also do commercial upfitting. So, your local companies around town, we put the shelving inside their vans, ladder racks, things of that nature. So, we work also very closely with a lot of local fleet management companies. So, that's why the proposed extra storage a lot is, is, you know, ideal for us, because we just, when they get dropped off, we're just kinda running out of room for.
So, are you selling anything other than product here? Are you selling vehicles out of this?
No, we are not selling vehicles, only product. Yes. So, we're a seller and installer of the product.
So, and I'm still, I guess, confused about this driveway, because the twenty-nine fifteen eighty road, if that driveway comes down south, isn't it gonna run onto the triangular-shaped property?
So, no, you can kinda see the twenty-nine fifteen, see kinda behind the home right there that?
Behind meaning north or west?
Uh, west.
Uh-huh.
Kinda to the left there. That is his current driveway.
Oh, I see.
So, when he purchased the property, it was encroaching in on where the twenty-eight fifty-eight.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
So, that's why he, the, the owner now purchased that, but he has no use for that. So, that's the proposed boundary line adjustment right there that you see.
I see, okay.
So, the two blue, there's a couple different parcels that he owns in there, like just a little sliver of the driveway and things like that, so we're gonna clean that up.
Right.
Or just two simple parcels, and then follow our property line up.
Okay.
But you can kinda see the proposed ones, which are. The other way, I don't know. One more. So, this is the proposed plan for that property. So, essentially, we are just going to be, you know, parking vehicles there until they get outfitted and picked up, which is a pretty quick turnaround. Just, you know, when people drop the vehicles off, we're just kinda running out of room, you know.
How many parking spaces do you have now?
Uh, currently, I'm not entirely, you know, I'm not entirely sure on the park of our current lot how many we can fit. Vehicle wise, just because that does change.
How long will they sit there?
A couple of weeks is usually on the long side. It just, we get them in, they get dropped off from the, say that you're a company, you own an HVAC company. They drop the vehicle off and, you know, it takes us however long it takes to outfit them and then they come and pick them back up. So it's never, you know, six months, months, you know, along those lines. It's more of a quick turnaround for those. It's just we're running, you know, when the, the customer wants to bring us, you know, five vehicles, you know, we can accept that and grow our business.
What's the plan for fencing or, uh?
So we are, yeah, we are gonna have fencing according to St. Louis County guidelines, as well as the paved. We're gonna make that gravel into a no-dust paved service.
So it'll all be a paved, uh, case site?
Yes, yes. So it'll be paved, you know, with the, I think it was fifty-one spaces that we had in there, as well as the landscaping on the North Lindbergh side you can see there. And then on the east side of the, the parking spaces, that will be existing, uh, tree cover as a boundary in between the two residential homes.
It says proposed six-foot-high chain link fence, is that?
Yes.
And that's what you have currently on your sort of?
So it would, yeah, it would all come together. Like I said, that was, it's only accessible through our lot, which is currently fenced in gated.
And what type of lighting are you gonna run with here?
Um, I believe just dusted on. I don't, nothing to where it's gonna be blinding for traffic on North Lindbergh. It'll just more or less be something to illuminate the lot, you know, for security purposes. But nothing like a car dealership or anything to where you have issues blinding oncoming traffic.
So I, I have a question. This is probably for Jacob. So is cre, is this creating, I'm, I'm still trying to understand this. Is this creating a new flag lot? Is that what's happening?
No, what I, what I see here is that they're gonna be doing, in addition to a zoning proposal, um, which is in front of you, they'd also be going through a subdivision process at the same time to change some of these boundary lines. Cause like you said, there's five, currently five lots. They go through a boundary adjustment plat process, which is just the process to go from five to three. So there, from what I see, there is no creation of any flag lots here. Which, cause generally we want to discourage flag lots as much as possible.
Okay. So now we're just trying to clean all those parcels out as well as make that property useful.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you. At this time, you wanna have a seat? At this time, if you have any individuals that would like to speak in favor? Any individuals like to speak in favor of a group? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Or any individuals like to speak in opposition for a group? Okay, at this time, can we have a count, hand count of people in favor? Say two and, and those opposed would be no. Thank you so much. This hearing is closed and, uh, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll gavel out and then we'll gavel in for executive session and Mel will take roll call.
You got it.
So we just need a motion to adjourn.
At this time, I'd like to make.
So moved.
Second that motion? Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Being closed. This time I'd like to open up the executive session. I could have a.
Roll call please.
Roll call please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, you have a quorum.
Okay. Let's, uh, what is our first, uh, on the agenda here, executive session? PC ten dash twenty-four and eleven dash twenty-four, The Grove at Grants Trail, LLC.
Good evening, Commission. PC ten and eleven dash twenty-four, The Grove at Grants Trail LLC is a request for a change of zoning from M1 and FPM1 to R4 and FPR4 and a planned environment unit procedure in the R4 and FPR4 residence districts. The proposed use is a single-family residential subdivision. The tract size is thirty-five point two acres and is located on the northwest side of Interstate fifty-five at the southwestern terminus of Spokane Drive. As the commission may recall from public hearing, this site is located in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this larger aerial, you can see some of the surrounding residential development to the north and east across Interstate fifty-five and the kind of office warehouse industrial use south in the city of Green Park, um, across Grants Trail. The petitioner is requesting a change of zoning from M1 to R4 and FPR4 and a planned environment unit procedure in the R4. Um, as the commission may recall, the PEU procedure is used to allow for increased flexibility in design, to accommodate challenging topography on a site like creeks or sinkholes and for the construction of shared structures and amenities like a clubhouse or a pool. For this proposal, the proposed use is single-family residential subdivision. This is the preliminary, um, plan shown at public hearing, which shows a hundred and twenty-one single-family lots. The preliminary site development plan shows five new streets in the subdivision and the formation of four new cul-de-sacs. There are three vehicular entrances, one off at the terminus of Spokane Drive and then utilizing the sub-streets, the stub streets, sorry, on Jeff Lee and Malali Drives. Um, and then the plan also shows two walking path connections to Grants Trail, all of which are circled here on the slide. Um, the varying lot sizes facilitate the development of different single-family residence types. Um, detention areas are shown in the common ground throughout the site and the proposed landscaping, which is on this slide, is more intensive on the western side of the site. Um, and throughout those common ground areas, they're proposing to preserve about fifty-two percent of the existing tree mass and are proposing about thirteen acres of common ground. The department is recommending approval of both the requests for the change of zoning and the use of the PEU procedure. Um, the department finds that the surrounding area has steadily developed with more residential type uses and industrial use has become less appropriate for the location. The R4 residence district permits the development of single-family homes at an intensity that is characteristic of the area. And the PEU procedure allows for varying lot sizes, which enables different home price points. The more affordable housing product types shown at public hearing will appear, will appeal to first-time homeowners who are intent on settling in St. Louis County and aging homeowners who may desire smaller residences. Promoting new home construction at different price points encourages retention and attraction of households who may otherwise struggle to access St. Louis County's bountiful amenities and excellent services. Um, at public hearing, many residents expressed concern about the proposed access from Jeff Lee Lane, Malali Drive and Spokane Drive and expressed preference for southern access from Green Park Industrial Drive. Creating access from Green Park Industrial Drive would require a new bridge development in the floodplain and an interruption of Grants Trail, all of which the department finds undesirable at this site. Jeff Lee, Malali, and Spokane are all sub, stub streets that were supposed to facilitate and connect to future development. So the department finds that utilizing them is appropriate for this development. The petitioner ordered a traffic study for all three streets and the County Department of Transportation and MoDOT will direct access to the site and throughout the site. Some of the site development plan revisions that we are recommending include requiring a natural resources inventory of the site. We are recommending extensive landscaping throughout the site in the common grounds and on each residential lot, um, to have two trees instead of one tree. All disturbed area, all disturbed areas must be replanted with native grasses and plants as opposed to turf grass. We are recommending a natural buffer of fifty feet from Gravoy Creek, planted with a mixture of native trees and shrubs. And the Federal Highway Administration finds that levels of highway traffic noise typically max out at about eighty decibels at a distance of fifty feet from a highway. So to mitigate the effects of noise pollution, the department recommends that the petitioner construct a dense fifteen-foot landscape buffer yard in a landscape easement between I-55 and abutting the single-family lots. The petition may recall that the information report sent in your packet previously was said fifty feet, but after revision and, and looking at the plan closer, the department has found that fifteen feet is more feasible in this development. The department is also recommending that the petitioner provide a disclosure to per, prospective home buyers about their exposure to acute noise levels emanating from the nearby high-capacity interstate. And lastly, the department recommends that benches and permanent shade canopies at the Grants Trail trailheads be provided, as they will benefit both the residents and non-residents using the trail. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
You've heard the request. Do I have any question for that?
I got a question.
Could we get our motion done and then?
I'll, I'll come back a motion.
Okay. Second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, what, and that may have mentioned this before, what's the average price of one of these homes? Because if they're touting this as a beginner's home or elderly home. And my other concern is, um, how much space is gonna be available? It says thirty-five acres, but then you said thirteen acres is gonna be common ground or wooded. Plus the roads and cul-de-sacs are gonna take a couple acres. So now you're down to what, twenty-some acres? For a hundred and thirty homes?
So the, the first question is that I, I don't believe anyone on staff currently remembers the price points for the, for the homes. And I would, I would, I would state that as a land use consideration, the, the, the home prices are not necessarily a key consideration in, in making your determination for, for the land use. The, the second piece of that question as it pertains to the, the sort of remaining use of the site for, for the homes, that's what the PEU procedure permits. Is it gives this commission and the county the, the regulatory authority to, to sort of ensure that the homes can be sighted in a way that do minimize the impacts to the site. So the developer is showing, you know, trying to stay out of, away from those creeks. And additionally, what I would state too is that what, what Ms. Freudel was saying too is, is that from county, is from county planning perspective staff, we do find that having lots with smaller, smaller lots intermixed with bigger lots, some of that is, is staff's recommendation. Is that having some of these, these variations in lot sizes are desirable. So some of that is from our analysis of the, of the request.
It seems like they're cramming a lot into that and I don't.
They are, and they are actually providing fewer homes than the underlying zoning would.
That is true.
Than, what the underlying zoning would actually yield. So the R4 is the prevailing zoning as it immediately adjacent to it. In fact, there's actually some R6. So there is actually some higher density zoning, um, adjacent to this site. So they are actually proposing fewer homes than this site would actually yield under a standard subdivision design.
Would yield two hundred and four lots?
Correct.
By the pure R4 requirements.
Quick, quick question. Uh, can you elaborate on the bridge issue again?
So if they were to have access from Green Park Industrial, um, which I can go back to an aerial.
I saw it was.
Okay, um, it would require, like, it would require a bridge because of the creek run. There's a creek that runs kind of parallel to the trail. So it would require a bridge, um, over the creek and probably over the trail as well. And, and that would be an increase of infrastructure that the County Department of Transportation and Public Works has, uh, found undesirable.
And that's where it's located in the floodplain and in the floodway. So it would be, um, there would be a lot to analyze to be able to consider that.
So is the point of the PEU so that you do actually have the homes more concentrated, but then you have larger areas of common ground?
Yes, it essentially lets you not lose the number of developable lots by providing for things like detention in the common ground, protecting these streams, um, making these trail connections. Because the pure R4 residence district would require that all of these lots be seven thousand and five hundred square feet in size and that they maintain, uh, that they be pretty wide. But using the PEU allows them to build no more homes than they would actually be entitled to, but they can make the lot smaller and they can make them more narrow in order to preserve some of these natural areas.
So will there be all, um, single-family homes detached?
Yes, attached. All detached.
And the highway that's there, um, I can't really read these contour lines. So I don't know, the elevation views, is the highway up or above the house sites? Are they?
The highway is, is down.
It's down.
It's down.
The highway is down.
The house are slightly higher, yes.
So, so the solution right now is a landscape buffer?
That's correct.
So let me say this. I live in North County. My condo faces Highway two seventy, literally, and I'm up above the highway, right? MoDOT just built a sound wall after four years of living through this mess. We, we got a sound wall that's twenty feet high. But because some of our units are taller than the wall, the sound wall is not making a difference. I mean, the noise is just jumping the sound wall and so I don't know that a landscape buffer is gonna do much to control.
Is there any, is there, is there anything that you can do for those higher units? I mean, you can't build a hundred foot.
They, they could have done sound insulated windows. So at one time in my life, I worked for
Oh, for the.
The sound insulated program for the airport and, and homes within a certain radius of the airport got sound insulated windows and doors and that could make a difference more so. So I'm just saying, cause I'm living, I live in this situation.
Sure.
For twenty-four years, so. So we have these sound walls now that really have not made that big of a difference. And MoDOT has probably spent way more money than they needed to, so. So that's why I was asking this question. At what level are the homes in relationship to the, where the highway is?
Good question.
So the buffer will look good. I mean, you know, the landscape buffer will look good as you're, and, and is there an outer road or?
No, there's not.
There's no outer road.
There is no outer road.
Okay, so.
And not to speak, not to speak over Ms. Freudel. The, we did, we, to look at the edge of pavement to the, to the end of the property line, the property line, they're about eighty feet. Eighty-five feet is the, the rear property line of these residential units from the edge of pavement. So they're more than, they're, they're already more than the fifty feet that when we were doing that research about the, the Federal Highway Administration and sort of when looking at those decimal levels. And then the homes will be an additional, um, you know, number of feet into the property. So the, the homes will be at least a hundred feet. But the consideration of requiring, um, sound mitigating windows is not something that we've ever included inside of one of our staff reports. So I think that we would be happy to discuss that internally with our Public Works Department. And, and see, if, if the commission were to vote on its recommendation tonight, because there's still time before the letter of recommendation is released to council, that a couple of these issues could also be finalized if the commission makes an overall, an overall decision.
My question is, where would you stop that on, on this development?
I think the natural end would just be the, the lots that have a rear, a rear, um, a rear property line facing the interstate.
Okay. Would somebody like to, uh, put that into a?
I think staff, I think we would want to, let's talk with our public work staff, um, and. Yes, and, and speak with, with McBride, absolutely. Um, and we can, so we can reach out to McBride tomorrow, um, if the commission makes a decision tonight.
Help them sell those lots. You know?
It probably would, I mean, had I known. Probably wouldn't have parked my own, so.
Thank you. At this time, uh, could we have a vote?
So what are we voting on?
We're voting on approval.
For the change in zoning?
Yes. And special procedure, and the P E U special procedure.
And that wouldn't, and the windows really don't, it aren't a part of the zoning decision, that would be separate.
So what, I think what we're going to do is that if the, if the commission does vote on this this evening and does vote favorably. Uh, we will reach out to McBride because again, your letter of recommendation, you will see it again. So if we speak with McBride, if we speak with, with Public Works, um, it may be something that we can put into, um, as a condition of development. Uh, but we want to speak with, um, the property owner and, uh, with our public work staff.
And then we would overview that with you when we bring the letter of recommendation back.
Changes between now and then.
Okay.
We have a motion already. We just need to vote on it. We call for a vote?
Do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Deciding.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
I abstain.
Shy or is that?
It's four, one. Because we only have five.
Let me open up the.
The bylaws.
Okay, I'll go with it.
That would be a, um.
You're changing your vote to an aye?
Yes.
I'll go.
Okay. Okay, then that is five in favor.
Very good.
I can think by arm twisting could really like get it.
I just think it's. Oh, so. PC ten dash twenty-four and eleven dash twenty-four has been approved. Uh, can we go into letters for approval?
Are you gonna do this?
Sure, so we have PC oh eight twenty-four Omaha Collision Company LLC. This is a letter of recommendation, uh, recommending approval of the amended development in the C eight consistent with the commission's actions on April first.
Do you need to wait until Christopher's back to take a vote?
Yes.
Yes, we shall, because we only have, because we shall wait until Mr. Bedell has returned.
I'll say that again when he comes back. Thanks, Abby.
That's a Gettler site, right?
Yes, correct. So this is reusing the building for a collision center.
Been sitting vacant a very long time.
It still won't be open on Sunday. That would have been a big steak.
Been a big steakhouse, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this the guy that stacked all the cars in and?
Yeah.
Had them all crammed in there?
Yes, he has his team of.
Blow the whistle and.
Yeah, all thirty of them go out and shuffle the cars around.
Yes.
Hey, the next thing that happens after that is they go home.
Yeah.
So I'm sure when they blow that whistle, they're in, they're on it.
Yeah. Probably more accidents inside than.
So the commission will recall this is PC oh eight twenty-four Omaha Collision Company LLC. Before you as a letter of recommendation for approval consistent with your actions on April first.
Okay. Looking for a, uh, motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Letters for approval, PC. Zero eight dash twenty-four.
Number, yeah, site plans.
Executive session site plans, can we go through the site plans?
So first we have, uh, PC twenty-five dash twenty-one DLJ Lindbergh LLC. Which is a C eight planned commercial district. Uh, the proposed use is a fast food restaurant with a drive-through and a financial institute also with a drive-through. Um, it's a point eight acre tract on the north side of Lindbergh Boulevard approximately three hundred and sixty feet east of Wisteria Lane. It's located in South County and there it is outlined in red on the aerial. Here's a larger aerial of the site. Um, so you can see, uh, both uses are occupied in one building. Um, and there are separate drive-through lanes, so, uh, Lindbergh Boulevard is down at the bottom of your screen. Um, the drive-through lane closest to Lindbergh is for the fast food restaurant. And then, uh, more interior to the site are two, uh, Bank Teller drive-through lanes or like automatic lanes. I think the battery in this thing is almost out, sorry. And we're recommending approval, the site development plan is consistent with the, um, conditions of development that the commission recommended.
Okay. Just for folks that had seen this before. Gary, you saw this before it come through there and there was a question about. A sewer that ran right through the building, they have. Agreed to move the sewer. That's been agreed, so with that, like to ask for a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. Uh. On with. PC.
Next, we have PC forty-four dash ninety Public Storage Inc., which is also zone C eight. It's a self-storage facility on five point two acres on the south side of Manchester Road and west side of Barrett Station Road. Um, this is located in, in West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. This is just architectural elevations. There we go, um, there, this is the front facade of the structure, they are changing that, that architectural element at the top. Uh, they're painting it orange, it's currently kind of the same sort of stucco color of, as the building with like a purple stripe. Um, and, and they're, they would like to repaint it orange. And the department is, um, there is a requirement for architectural review in their C eight ordinance, but there are no specific. Architectural, um, requirements.
Maybe I'm colorblind, where's the purple? Is there purple?
So it is currently purple, but the, the proposal is for the orange, sorry, I didn't say that.
You can kind of see the, like darker stripe, because it's kind of opaque, I think that was the purple.
Yeah.
Ooh, so close.
Um, so the department is recommending approval.
Got a good a motion for approval?
So move.
Second, second, second emotion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Next, uh, site plan, please.
Good evening, this is PC oh nine dash twenty-three Michael Brown. Oh yeah, this thing is going out, okay. Uh, PC oh nine dash twenty-three Michael Brown was a request for a zoning of C eight plant commercial district. To allow for vehicle storage facility and employee parking on zero point six one acres. On the southeast side of Concord Village Avenue approximately two hundred forty feet northeast of Baptist Church Road. The planning commission saw this site, um, at public hearing on March twentieth of twenty twenty-three and a decision was made. April twentieth of twenty twenty-three. This site is located in South County and as you can see on the aerial to your right is the site in question. This is coming before you tonight as a site development plan. Um, of note, they closed the northernmost curb cut, so there is only one curb cut now to this site. They've also reduced the parking from fifty-nine spaces to fifty-four. And in addition, we've, um, obtained landscaping from the petitioner. Which provides a landscape buffer from, along Concord. And so the department is recommending approval. If I could get to that slide. There we go.
We have a motion for approval.
So move.
Second emotion?
Second.
Any questions?
Quick question, how is the selection of the tree types? Just real quickly, how does, how does that happen?
How does that happen? So typically staff relies on the, our landscape architect or the, um, you know, their, their, um, arborist or whomever they have that they, they have on the plan. In your C eights, um, frequently we recommend and, and almost always you adopt our recommendation for Missouri natives. So we do typically require Missouri native plantings now. Uh, and the zoning ordinance, even if it is a straight zoning, what, what we designate straight zoning. Um, has a requirement that all plantings be either fifty percent native or fifty percent drought tolerant and drought resistant plants. Um, so as long as a property owner or petitioner. Provides a listing of plants that meet the required, that criteria, uh, we accept those. Now, we try to be very cognizant of, um, ensuring that they're not planting anything that's inappropriate under power lines, that, uh, you know, we try to be cognizant of. Uh, ensuring that they're not planting things, um, over sewer lines that would be damaging. Uh, but we do rely frequently on the engineers and the professionals to, um, provide those lists.
So there were probably five or six different types.
We do, and we do require variety.
Variety, yeah.
Somebody was just telling me about the, what is the kind of tree now that's just sort of replicating everywhere with the white flowers we like?
Bradford pears.
We do not, we do not permit those.
Sure, they're terrible, they're everywhere.
They're everywhere, yeah, they're pretty.
They're, they're.
Not native, but they.
They're not native.
Taking over.
And they, they die very easily and very quickly and then they split. So because they grow very quickly, they become very top-heavy, they split open really quickly, um, so they are. Um, they, they are deemed by the state of Missouri to be, uh, an invasive and I, I don't know technically whether they're noxious, but the, the count this.
They're obnoxious.
Um, but we do actively, uh, do not permit the, the planting of Bradford pears.
They're not, they're not helping anybody sign his problems.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, we have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. On with, uh, good of the order.
I think we've got two things before Paul comes up and, and Ms. Hart is not here. Uh, so we may, I may say this a second time, but I do want to let you know that, uh, Paula was inducted into her alma mater into the. Um, Academy of Civil Engineers, um, so she, it was a big honor for her, she went down to, um, down to Rala and accepted that award. It's that, actually at the same time that the county's chief operating officer, Deanna Venker, um, she is also a civil engineer, so, uh, she and Paula. Uh, both received that honor, um, but when you, we do see Paula again, do, uh, heartily congratulate her upon her, uh, professional achievements. So I just wanted to let you all know. But Paul?
Could you send a, a little email out?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Make sure this is high enough for me. Um. Uh, I don't come to these very often, so I, I figured I should probably introduce myself real quick for those who have forgotten who I am. Or who have not met me yet, uh, my name's Paul Weatherford, I'm the senior planner for language planning, uh, here at, in the department. Uh, and I'm here to talk to you about St. Louis County twenty fifty, um, and our engagement efforts. Um, we just had a wonderful, uh, long but wonderful weekend at, uh, the Earth Day Festival, uh, in Forest Park. Uh, so yeah, we've been talking about St. Louis County twenty fifty a lot, I know Jacob's been talking to you about, about it a lot, um. To me at least, it finally feels like we've arrived, right? We're out in public talking to people, um, about what we want the future of the county to look like. So we have sort of two ways that we're engaging, uh, the community, the first would be in-person engagement. Um, on our website, stloscountytwentyfifty.com, we have a calendar of events. You all should have received a, a calendar as well, uh, saying where we're gonna be, uh, and when. Um, as well as in certain locations within the county, so all six of the county's rec centers. And. All three of the county's, uh, health, like public health clinics, uh, where they see patients. Um, as well as, I believe it's nineteen different county libraries. And. We will have what you see on, on that picture, uh. With James, our, our friend from Parks, uh, posing in front of this, what we're calling an engagement station, right? So it's, uh, sort of passive. People who are visiting these facilities can come up to this and kind of check out what's going on. Uh, there's not going to be staff there, park staff are, are helpful and friendly, we've kind of instructed them to just direct them to us. Uh, same with library staff, thing like, things like that. But all the information somebody would need is, is right there, right? Takes you, directs you to our website, um, where you can fill out a survey, um, fill out a, a sort of mapping exercise, sign up for updates. And all, all the fun stuff that we want people to do, right, to provide us feedback. Uh, so this is a map of the locations, uh, where we're gonna be. I forgot to mention, we're also gonna be, uh, have those engagement stations at, uh, select transit centers, uh, in the county. Uh, so I don't know if we provided this map for you or not.
Yes, this map is in there as well.
Okay, great, um, so if you're out and about in, in the community, if you're at the library, if you're, um, catching the train before the Cardinals game, um, and you see this. Um, feel free to, to, to go up to it, don't be shy, um, if somebody sees you interacting with it, they might be interested as well. Um, and if people ask you questions, um, as far as you are comfortable doing, talk to them about it or direct them to, to myself or Jacob. And we'd be happy to talk to anybody. So the other, uh, kind of avenue that we're engaging the community is through our website, stloscountytwentyfifty.com. Um, so we have a couple exercises you can do, this word cloud, we're asking, you know, people to say, um. Three words that, uh, that, that come to mind, sort of just word association when they sort of envision a, a, a positive future for the county. Um, well, this, this is a screenshot of the mapping exercise, uh, you can drop a, a pin on the map of St. Louis County. Um, of a place that you really like in the county, some, somewhere that you think is doing well. Leave a comment about what you think, uh, makes this place successful. Um, we also want to hear the opposite, right? What is a place that when you're there, you, you know, it induces a headache and you can't wait to leave? Why, we want to know why that is, right? Um, because we want more of the, the former and less of the latter, um, and so we need to, and this is an example of one. I can't read it, but, um, somebody said, I think it's about, they like the Columbia Bottoms and they want more, um. Preserved open space, right? Uh, so that's the kind of feedback that we're soliciting from residents, you can also sign up for updates. Provide just general feedback in a, in a comment box, um, that comes to us. And yeah.
I was looking through the, all those words on that.
Yeah, 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 let's go back, let's see what it says.
I didn't see liberal anywhere, but I see conservative.
Okay. I'm not monitoring, so you can put whatever you want, Gary. I mean, that is, I mean, that can be somebody's aspirational future for the county, right? That's, who am I to?
That's right.
Right, right.
Can you go back to the first picture in your presentation with the guy him?
Yes.
So these are the kind of stations that are set up at all those.
Yeah, so you, so if you go to a, if you go to a county rec center, if you're at Greensville Rec Center. Or St. Vincent, uh, Community Center Kennedy, you'll see this in the lobby, right? If you go to one of those nineteen libraries, you'll see that. Um, if you go to one of the county health clinics, you'll see that, James won't be there, but the, the rest of that will be there. Um, sort of enticing people to come in and, and check it out, um, and.
So when they scan the QR code that's on the.
Takes them to the website, yeah.
Takes you to the website.
Right, we also have paper versions of, if somebody doesn't want to, want to do, either they don't know how or they're not comfortable.
On that table, what is?
Yeah, 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 so there's a paper version of a, of a brief survey, um, that you can fill out and also.
Just give it to the, like, library staff or?
Yep, and they'll get it to us, yeah.
So. So have you had any success yet? I mean, has?
These are.
People been interacting?
These are being launched now, that's, that's our first one that went, that was put up today. Um, I can call James tomorrow and see if anybody has shown up. Um, but beyond, you know, by the end of the week, we expect all of these to be up and running, so. If, and also if you're somewhere and you see something amiss, something wrong, um, let us know. Um, if you frequent somewhere a lot and every time you're at St. Vincent Community Center and you see that nobody's engaging with this, let us know. Because we have sort of other ideas about places we might, we might want to relocate things, um, to, to capture.
So what's gonna be at the farmer's markets in these outdoor spaces?
Me.
So at Kirkwood and, and.
Yeah.
You skipped over all of that, Paul, that's I think the most.
That's, yeah.
How did you engage with the public?
So when we were at, uh, the Earth Day Festival, right, we had a table, uh, we had a banner just like that one. Um, we had paper surveys, we had, uh, coloring activities, we had a, we had a really cool one for kids. Um, that was, it was basically a blank page, it was, we're asking them to draw their favorite place and like write a sentence about what they like about that place. and like write a sentence about what they like about that place. So we can, one is to draw, draw the kids and the parents. We can talk to them while the kids are drawing. But also we want to, you know, talk to the, the future residents, right, of, of St. Louis County about, not that they're not residents now, but you know what I mean? About what they like and what they want to see, what's gonna get them to stick around as they grow up, right? So, yeah.
Are your community engagement consultants out with you?
Not at all these, at some of these, yeah. We plan on going in person to some of these transit centers to capture people as they return home from work a few days. They'll be with us there. We won't have a table there. We'll just be clipboarding, kind of walking around, talking to people. But yeah, they'll, some of these will be there, some of them they won't. But we got a good group, so. And hopefully you'll be there too at one of these.
I want to build on what Paul has been saying is that, and I think that you're unders, I don't want to say underselling it, Paul, but I mean, you have scheduled us and Paul has worked very hard on, on getting this. I mean, our consultant has most assuredly been helping us, but Paul has worked very hard to get us. And this, these are not just the only five events that we're going to.
No, yeah, this is.
This is just a snippet of, he's got something for us.
Almost every weekend.
We think there might be one free weekend.
Yeah, every single weekend and some weeknights.
Yeah.
And what I want to inform the commission about where we are generally in the process, which is that engagement is ongoing throughout the, until the day that this is adopted, engage, we're engaging. But engagement's really two, is two, is being really two big thrusts. We're in the first one, which is we are gonna be chatting with you all in just a couple of weeks about the existing conditions reports. We know where we've been. And we're asking people, well, if we know where we've been and you're experiencing where we are now, where do you want to go? So that's where, that's what the focus of our engagement is right now, which is to ask people in places where we know we can meet people where they are living in their communities, where do you want to see St. Louis County in twenty-five years? Setting that aspirational, those aspirational goals for where we want to be. Because then the second really big phase of engagement is actually gonna become, is gonna come in this fall when we'll both be doing sort of this going out to farmer's markets and these, these, these festivals again. But we will actually have some more traditional town halls in the fall as well, which is when we've taken the existing conditions report of where we've been. We've heard people where they want to go and we've been working through options about how to get there. And then to go back out to the people and say, if this is where we've been, this is where we want to go. Well, we have some roadmaps. Which routes do you like? Because some of these routes are going to, are going to take us to different places. So what do you like? What don't you like? Really hear back from people what they prefer over, you know, one option versus another option. Because that will then ultimately inform the final recommendation from the department to you all.
And so Jacob touched on this, but in May, for the May sixth executive meeting, the project team will be here to present the existing conditions report. So we would like to have that executive meeting in person. Normally we do those virtually. But because of that bit of content, which will be exciting, we want to have that here to, to have a robust discussion.
And I, yes, and I, yeah, we are going to also, I think we're going to schedule it as both your executive session, but also as a, as a work session of the planning.
Yes, I need to talk with the county councilor's office about how to properly advertise a working session.
So we will be, so we will advertise it as a working session because the existing conditions report, it will not, it will be, we have all the information, but we want to workshop with you all. What are, how do we want it? What's the narratives that are coming out of this? How do you all, you know, what is your all's perspective on that? Because conversations with you, with our steering committee, with electeds and with other stakeholders are going to really help drive the narratives that come out of the existing conditions report. I have some ideas, but we've got to, I need a lot more input before I say those are the right, those are the right ideas.
When is that? May to what?
I think it's gonna, we're gonna have that, you're normally, May sixth, which is your, would be your normal. Next planning commission meeting is when this meeting will be occurring.
They're gonna send something out.
Yeah, we will send.
What, is that gonna be a little earlier?
I, I'm.
That's what I'm anticipating.
Yeah, we are gonna, I'm anticipating that we will ask you all a little bit earlier that day.
It's gonna be in prep.
In person, yes.
And I would just add one other thing we're doing to engage the public is our statistically valid survey that I know Jacob has mentioned. It's hitting mailboxes as we speak. We're probably not right now. They've, they've delivered the mail, I think.
It already has, yes.
But I think we've already gotten some responses back from it. So it should be about eight weeks before we hit the required number of responses and can analyze the, the data we get from that.
So what Paul is not alluding to is saying and as, is that as part of our outreach is we're doing a survey that we want to make sure the information we get is statistically valid. So our consultant has, we have, we have put together and, and done the survey questions. It will take a respondent about fifteen minutes-ish to complete the survey. It's all about how they're feeling about how things are going in St. Louis County. It was then randomly selected ten thousand households throughout St. Louis County, not just unincorporated, but, but within our municipalities. Ten thousand households were randomly selected to receive the survey. It has been mailed out to them. It has reached their homes. We know because one person, one person at, at Earth Day said, I had something in the mail delivered to me and I thought it was a scam. So we were able to confirm to them, no, in fact, it is not a scam. It really did come from us. So we do know that it has hit people's mailboxes. Because we sent it to ten thousand households, we expect, we need at least a thousand responses to be able to extrapolate statistically and create a valid survey of, of residents. And that is based in statistical science that when you have a residence population of about a million people, if you can get a thousand randomly selected responses, you can statistically, you can extrapolate to something that is valid statistically based on those numbers. So our, our consultant is contractually required to get those numbers to produce that, to produce that report. And when that report is done, we will also be sharing that report.
Now, when you say the thousand, you're gonna need, I would think, or to come out correctly, different parts of the county to make sure that you get the feedback from every.
Geographically, and the survey is, so they, they chose, they chose geographic and also as the respondent, so the, I don't know all the statistical science, but these surveys are coded, so they know who is responding back. So they know where they, where these residents generally are living. And then on the survey itself, the residents are asked as much as they are willing to share about their own demographic backgrounds to make sure they were hitting.
If you don't get enough from that particular area, will they send out some more?
Yes, they will. So that is part of, that is why it will take up to eight weeks and why we sent ten thousand. Ten thousand is that we, to ultimately get to that thousand-ish number. And if we, and so they know, because they do this, this is a constant thing they do. They know who to follow up with, so that they only follow up with people who have not responded. And so they will, they are also would send requests saying you haven't filled out the survey yet multiple times until we get the right numbers.
Is it possible you could send that out to the planning commission, just not send it, but email?
Just the survey so that you could.
So we could see it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Gretchen's Delivery Digest reflects that she is getting the survey.
Are you serious?
From ETC, Olatha, Kansas.
That's so funny. That's so funny. Well, you are a randomly selected resident of St. Louis County. That's so funny. And we. We, the, and the company that's doing this is ETC, so they are a subconsultant of our consultant. And we have had, they have all of the data on the counties, on counties' addresses and, and they fully, they fully through a computer program completely chose the households.
That's good. Very good. Any, any questions?
I have one.
Questions for Paul?
Oh. Reminder, not directly related to this. Hopefully everyone received the invitation to Mr. Sneed's celebration of his time on the planning commission. That is on May second. We're gonna do it at the Pavilion at LeMay. I think we said four to six P M. So it's kind of a, you know, come when you can. It's not, you know, nothing formal. We'll just be sitting around talking about the good old days.
I did not follow the directions. I, I, I emailed and I didn't call, so. There you go.
Yeah, I'm worried I have the wrong email for you, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, I got the email.
Okay. Okay.
What I, what I said was I emailed her. I didn't call. I didn't.
Oh, I see, I see. But that's all I have.
All righty. You got anything else, Paul?
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Jacob?
Thank you.
No, I think we're.
Okay, I'm, well, I'm ready.
Move for adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We will see you.
You in two weeks.
The sixth. You know that vote's gonna be.
Was that a four one vote to adjourn?